Okay, it's going live. It's got a spinny wheel, but it also says live, so maybe it's... okay, now you're live.
Uh, well, this is a... okay, this pertains, okay.
Good.
Yeah. We are meeting, this is a special meeting of of the Kingsbury City Commission. Let's see, hold on just a second, I'm so sorry, this just came in. Oh, okay, okay. Of the Kingsbury City Commission, uh, so let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Commissioner Heinemeier.
Here.
Commissioner Ignosik.
Here.
Mayor Nolan.
Here.
So we'll go ahead and call to order this special commission meeting. Item number one. Uh, discussing and consider foundation repair for New C Hall. So this is Frank has been, uh, work it, pursuing.
Good work, Frank.
Pursuing, uh, all the information for this, so take it away.
We have six bids turned in. There were a couple that were going to, never heard back, and I made multiple calls, so. We have six, and on the paper in front of you is, uh, they're numbered, and a brief explanation of what the bid actually says, and the price, basically. We can go over that real quick, I guess, bid number one.
Is this any of them? Okay.
Okay. So, okay. The first bid was, um, to dig and pour the concrete piers only. And it was between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars for that.
Well, okay, so we say only, what else would there be?
You'll, there's possible replacement, possible replacement of the wood underneath. The beams are the floor joists. Beams being the most important, critical thing. And they're, they're sold and installed, most of the bids, by linear foot. And then there's also a need for excavation to get under the house to actually do the work, which can be bypassed, has not an expense, because most of them are willing to pull the floor up and work from inside the house, under the, under the house then. There's pros and cons for doing that. One might be that you lose that floor, the original floor, and just go back in with the subfloor of plywood and you cover it with whatever you want to, vinyl plank or carpet or whatever. But if you want to.
I think the only floor that we've seen is like carpet and linoleum.
There's, that's what's, that's what's over, yeah, that's mostly.
Yeah, but I mean, that's all I've been able to visually.
What I've seen was, uh, oh, it looks like original flooring.
Okay.
Yeah. There might be some that's like, not tongue and groove, but it still looks like very old floor. That's, that's the major additional expenses, excavation to get underneath the house, and, um, replacement of, you know, bad wood beams, mostly. So this, this first bid was twelve to fifteen, to pour, dig and pour, dig and pour the concrete piers, hold the whole house up. If he asked to replace any beams, uh, he said, where, where needed and appro, where needed, approximately twenty-two dollars a linear foot.
But we don't know at this point what shape the beams are in.
Yeah.
Or do we?
We don't know, we don't know. Some, some have bid, I've got one bid that was replace all the beams with, regardless, and, and another one, they're saying, I don't think you're gonna need to replace, maybe one or two, but nobody, nobody actually been underneath the house to look, they just, from the outside looking in. And I hear, and we're getting explanations of what they're seeing both ways. So twelve to fifteen, to pour the concrete piers, and he said approximately two thousand dollars to excavate. He wanted to go, this guy wanted to go through the floor, he says a lot easier, a lot faster. He said, but if you wanna save the floor, we can go into excavation, so we can get underneath there and work. And he said it'll, I run about two thousand plus.
You know, I would be down for saving the floor, it's probably longleaf pine, it's a historic building, if we can.
Well, I saw, I asked everybody for bids both ways. I said, I need a bid where you can go through the floor, cheapest way, go through the floor. And I want a bid where you go underneath the house and leave that floor intact. So, uh, we've had people that would not go underneath the house, they wouldn't go through the floor only. And we've had people that say, there's no need to go through the floor, ever. Well, in rare instances, maybe, but in general, no. And, um, you know, so I asked, I asked for bids both ways.
Yeah, and y'all have seen the, the store, we had to go through the floor. And it, you know, all we did was, well, there were already, uh, what looks like trapdoors on the floor, where they just cut the wood, they were already there. And so we just pulled those back up, there's like four or five of them.
Well, the way, reason they go, it's easy to go, easier to work that way is because they can actually stand up and work under the house.
Right.
Because they have, all those, probably cedar post piers that are holding it up, what's left of them, they'll pull them out, and they will dig down three to four feet, and they'll pour, basically a big pad, and attach to that pad, and the same pour is a concrete column. And they pour that all at one time, and, uh, it fits underneath the beam, and that's, and then that's in. It's, it's locked in, it's good, it's good.
What is under there now, is it pillars, or is it like cinder blocks, or?
It's like wooden posts.
It's wooden posts, okay. So it's not concrete, it's just wooden posts?
No, there's no concrete.
Okay. So they're talking about replacing the wooden posts with concrete?
They would replace every single, everybody would replace every single one of them.
Okay.
Uh, and there's two options, besides digging a hole and pouring the concrete pad and the column, which is pretty sturdy, and is not gonna move very much. Everyone has told me if you keep it dry underneath the house afterwards, it'll, it won't move, period. And it also mechanically attaches the joists, the house, to the columns. The other option is just dry stacked block, and they don't dig a hole, they just set it on the ground, and they start stacking these heavy sixteen by sixteen blocks, till they get close to the beam, and then they'll shim, whatever they have to, for that space. But that is not mechanically attached.
And it can also shift if the ground shifts.
It was, everyone has said, if the ground gets, if water runs underneath your house, that block that's sitting on the ground will move, it's gonna move. Eventually, they'll all move until they fall down. And they said, and believe it or not, and I, I believe it because I know trucks going by, right there on the, uh, Kingsbury Road, and the train going by, vibrates that whole area.
I'd much rather do piers, I mean, we did dry stacked blocks for one of our buildings, and we had to redo it for piers, because it does shift, you know, I mean.
Little by little, but it does, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, second bid was, uh, they broke it down, it was a thirty-two thousand, hundred and fifty, three thousand, two hundred and fifty to excavate, to get under the house. And they're, they want to replace all the beams at thirty dollars a foot, six thousand, three hundred. They're, they bid their concrete piers by each, priced by each, and they said forty-six, because they didn't include the porches. I called them and asked them, and they said, it was just the house.
I didn't know there would be that many under there.
I, I didn't realize, but, um.
I mean, if I had to guess, I would guess like twenty-four or something.
They're, they're four feet apart.
Okay.
They're four feet apart on a beam, and the beams, I think, are about four feet apart, roughly. So.
Okay.
And it's, it's a pretty good chunk. But, uh, and I said, they, they said forty-six piers, and it doesn't include the porches, so that came up to twenty-one thousand eight. And then the, a third party.
Does the first bid include porches?
They're the only ones that, this is the only one that did not include the porches, as far as I know. Everyone else assumes the porches are involved.
Part of the deal, okay.
We can, I can call again and make absolutely sure, but I think they are. Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
A third-party engineer certification, and I said, that's optional. They didn't bid it as optional, but it is, it's seven hundred and fifty bucks. They said, if you ever wanna resell the house, if we were, if we were flipping this thing, they said, you get the engineering certification, and it will be inspected and certified by an engineer, and that makes the value of your foundation and repair and your, it goes to go up considerably, and it makes it secure, and it's transferable to the next buyer. He said, if you don't intend to sell it, and if you're gonna keep it, he says, we're gonna do the exact same work we would do, whether it's certified or not. He said, you're gonna get the same warranty from us, whether it's certified or not. He said, but, so that's, that's an option, you can cut it if you want. All right. Number three, the bid, twenty-five thousand, eight seventy-five, but it was for the excavation only. They would dig out enough dirt so they could get underneath the house completely, and then after they viewed that and determined what shape it was in, they would give a price on the repairs and the stabilization.
Okay.
Uh, bid four, they, they priced theirs the same, uh, priced each pier individually, uh, but fifty-nine concrete piers.
Okay.
And that covered, that did cover all the porches.
Okay.
Level and stabilize and re-shim to bring it up to level, twenty-seven, six. But however, additional costs that they could be incurred, replacement of beams, so seventy-five dollars a foot, floor joists, eighteen dollars a foot, and if they had to do any trenching, ninety-five dollars a foot. And, yeah. So. But their original bid was just to, uh, raise it enough, stabilize it, and try to level it out. Bid number five. Okay, I didn't, I didn't mention the words in notes. Written bid, written bid, written bid, but some were in writing, well, not writ, writing. They were just by speaking with a contractor and notes I made while we were talking. Bid number five, the dry stacked blocks, what you don't wanna do evidently, cost that off is twelve thousand. Poured, peered, poured pad and piers, he wants twenty-eight thousand dollars for all the piers.
So is there alternatives, uh, either dry stacked blocks or?
The dry stack is an, is an alternative, no one, no one, everyone said, that is absolutely the cheapest way. You can't, well, we're going between twelve, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, and twenty-eight thousand.
It's cheap for a reason, though, I mean.
That's, that's a lot of money to save. But.
For, for ten years, and then you gotta spend it again?
The only ones, every time they said, not to downgrade somebody's mobile home, but they said, this is the way you do mobile homes, dry stack. He said, we just stack the blocks, drop it down, and you're done. He said, but if you wanted to stay there, the dry, dry stack's not gonna, it won't last. But mobile homes, he said, are up four feet sometimes, he said, you can get underneath there and work on them real easy.
Yeah.
You can go underneath there and straighten them out, little or nothing.
Yeah. It's easier to, to maintain.
Right.
You know, what we're talking about, there's no ability to maintain these, so.
It'd be very difficult, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, bid number five, he said, pour the pad and piers, uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars. He said, he will not cut the floors. There are rare exceptions where he might have to, but he doesn't anticipate that. And there's no additional charges, no charges for excavation, no charges for beams. He said, they don't replace floor joists, he said, the reasons. He said, but they will, if it's really bad, they will assist for it with a new board and attach it. He said, uh, that's the most they'll do for floor joists. He said, but other than that, he said, twenty-eight thousand. Okay, bid number six. This was also, uh, we just talked, and I made notes. They'll do the job, he's, labor only, is all, what he's charging us for and what he's bidding, is twenty-three thousand dollars. And we, he said, we will have to pay for all the materials, and he said, that's gonna be approximately three thousand, five hundred. Uh, he's not gonna handle transferring our money to a supplier, Home Depot, or a lumberyard. He says, we have to make the payment. He says, they'll go pick it up, he's not touching our money. That twenty-three thousand dollar bid, he's asking for, he's gonna ask for an amount at the first beginning, then every Friday, he wants to draw enough to cover his employees' wages. And then when they finish the job, whatever's left is his, and we're done. He said, he will want to remove the floor to access. That's, that's not an, he, that's the only way he's gonna do it, he's not gonna go underneath and work from underneath. He'll remove the floor, he said, if the flooring is salvageable, they'll reinstall it. If it's not salvageable, they'll just furnish at their, at their expense, and install three-quarter inch plywood subfloor in all the rooms.
That's five.
That's, that's six, that's six.
Six, excuse me.
Yes.
Well, it doesn't seem like anyone is just crazy out of.
In shoulders of.
Yeah.
But, well, except the one that was, uh, excavate only.
Yeah, I think that's a.
Then they would inspect it and see what it would cost.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that.
So, I'm, I would say take, take number three off.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think number four, too, seems a little pricey, I mean, you know, with the seventy-five dollar, well, but if they don't replace anything, then that could be, yeah.
Well, no one said that it was perfect, everyone, everyone said that no one said it was awful, everyone said there was at least one beam that had an issue. And I don't know if the, he said, uh, one contractor said, if they purchased the beams, beams are sixteen feet long. And one contractor said that that one beam ran almost the length of the house, was twisted and cracked and not, they needed to be replaced, the whole beam. Everyone else said they at least solved some that needed to be, some had to be replaced, repaired, but they just think anything was major. So, and then like I said, the one bid, based on replacing all the beams, I think, uh, they're just being overly cautious about coming back and saying, we need more. But I don't know that they would. I don't know. If they would, uh, say, well, we thought, we bid on, you know, replacing all of it at six thousand, we only spent a thousand dollars, give you five thousand back. I don't know, maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't, don't know.
You think, you think they probably would, or they wouldn't, what did you just say?
I, I'd say they wouldn't.
Well, I would ask them, I would ask, I wanna, I would wanna see it, I mean, if they're willing, if we could entertain, well, the total price is, let's say thirty-two, well, let's take the seven fifty off, would that be? Seven. Thirty-one. Thirty-one four, thirty-one thou, still, it's still thirty-one thousand.
Then we have to add the pier, the, the piers for the porches, too.
Yeah, the porches aren't included, so.
And the first, the first one is the only one that mentioned the chimneys.
They, he's the only one that mentioned the chimneys, and if he had to mention.
Is there only the one chimney that we know of?
There's two chimneys.
There's two.
There's two chimneys. Uh, the one on the north side, by La Voix.
Yes.
To me, it looks fairly straight, it's straight. They, they've been there for a hundred and something years.
Right.
And they didn't fall, I don't, I don't, I can't, well, from the ground, I can't see any cracks. I can see where some of the, look like finished concrete, I mean, like stuck over, it has cracked off, flaked off. But that one chimney on the south side, it has a, it has a twist or a bow to it. I don't know if that's the way it was built, I don't think so.
Probably not, it's, it's probably over a hundred years old, so.
You know, they, they, people still build stuff really nice and straight.
Yeah.
But it's, it's got a definite kink in it, and he's, he thinks, he's pretty, he's not sure when they start to raise it, if it won't fall. And he would recommend that it come down, uh, before they start trying to lift it.
Like what's above the roof? Or the whole?
Well, I think if you start, you might as well, because there's, it only goes down.
Does it show in the house?
If you look inside that closet, yeah.
That closet only goes down, it only goes down halfway.
Yeah, but it, the, the, the chimney sits on top of that closet frame.
Right, well, that's the one on the north, but you said the one.
There's one on the other side, too.
And it does the same thing, it only comes down to the top of a, of a closet?
Yeah, they're used. I guess there was a fireplace or a stove there on both rooms, that one is where the kitchen dining room is now. And, uh, and, yeah, I didn't notice, I noticed the one on the north side, because you see it, the brick. And, but the other one is kinda like hidden, but that's there, too.
But it's the same thing, it only comes down a few feet in the room, it doesn't come down to the floor.
But there's a lot of attic space to go through.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not like they're a integral.
No.
Fixure in the house, they only come down a few feet into the room, they're.
If they were good sturdy, I'd say we just roof around them like they have been.
Yeah.
But if, uh, if that one falls, if it does fall.
It's not a working chimney or a fireplace or anything, it's just.
That ton of bricks, and it will be a ton.
Yeah, I could do a lot of it.
Go through the roof, go through the deck, go through the ceiling, or the floor underneath it, and probably to the floor in the bottom of the house. So. But, then again, it stayed there for a hundred and something years, and it might stay another.
Okay.
But I guess when it went in, it had something better supporting it, probably.
Yeah, I'm sure it went all the way to the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah, it went all the way to the floor, I'm sure it was, had, did you, have you seen it?
I've seen one of them, how it stops and the.
Stops, yeah, above the, about, at the door level, door, top of the door frame level.
To put that much weight on top of.
It does, indeed.
I was surprised, yeah, it amazed me to see that, but.
I know engineering, my son's an engineer. One two-by-four will hold about seven thousand pounds without even flinching, one two-by-four.
Well, why don't they put them seven feet apart, yeah, seven thousand pounds, seven thousand. He says, because you need to hang sheetrock on the things, though.
Yeah.
You gotta have a few more, and he says, and now you've got something that'll hold instead of seven, fourteen thousand pounds, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, forty-two thousand pounds.
Wow.
So.
All right.
Okay.
So, I mean, does that mean that the chimneys need to go first, no matter who we choose?
Or do we, are we able to? It, and it is, it's just, if they were fireplaces, I wouldn't be.
Oh, yeah.
But they're just chimneys that only come down to the top of the door frame.
They're decorative on the outside.
They're decorative on the outside, there's really nothing in it on the inside.
There's no reason for them to be there.
Yeah.
I mean, of course, we'll have to patch up that roof, you know, and.
Yeah. Or do we just kinda shore it up?
While the work's being done and.
Yeah.
If, if it falls while they're lifting it, I'm, I'm, I promise you, it's gonna go all the way through to the ground, through that house.
Like a bullet.
Like a bullet.
Yes.
Until it hits the dirt, it won't stop.
I have a little thing for chimneys, so I'm just, you know, kinda thinking, but, uh.
I asked him if he, if, if he could do that, he said, he could get somebody, he could get a crew to take that down. He gave you a price. He was, he was, he was, you know, eyeballing pricing on this stuff. No, he, he didn't give me.
So that, that would probably, so any chimney work would be on our part?
I would say, well, it's not, it's not any.
Right, it's not any bits, okay.
It's not any bid.
There's just someone mentioning the chimneys and.
And, uh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we need to go into executive session, are there any things that you need us to?
Questions or, or discussion points here?
I, I was thinking about the chimney still. We could, we could ask the other contractors, because no one else mentioned it, and I never thought about it, I never saw it until he told me, if that's an issue for them, or if they think it's an issue. And, well, hell, I don't know, they're, they do foundations, they don't do chimneys, so I don't know.
Well, but they might know how often something fell over, or.
Yeah, I mean, could you sheath it in plywood and like, two-by-sixes temporarily while it works being done? I mean. Seems to me that they should come down anyway, because they're like, not doing anything.
They're purely decorative on the outside.
Yeah.
They're actually kind of an eyesore on the inside. I wouldn't say eyesore, they're not.
Well, they're not right.
They're not right, on the inside. There's no fireplace, they just stop. Yeah. So, yeah, they are just decorative on the, although they are plugging that chimney hole of the roof.
If you wanna put a wood burning stove in there to heat the house or something.
That could be, yeah.
You can run a metals, metal, you know, chimney through there.
I wonder if you can remove somehow the interior to the closet space and leave the, the other part, which would be lighter and less strain on the house, and then you could still use it as a fireplace.
The, the framing of that closet is what's holding that chimney up.
Seventeen.
It's sitting on top of that closet.
Yeah.
But I guess even if the chimney bricks came down, if we wanted a wood burning stove in there or something, you could.
You still have a hole in the ceiling, yeah.
Got a new hole.
Yeah.
I don't know, I kinda think they should come down.
They should.
Right?
I think they, if we do one, and I think we should do that one, I'm kinda leery about the one, because it does have a, it's not straight, straight.
Something wrong with it.
Yeah.
Age has caught up to it, I guess.
Yeah, it would tear up a lot of stuff.
Yeah. It would be so heartbreaking if it just broke a hole all the way through the house.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to go up there and just tinkle and knock off individual bricks, let them slide down the roof. It'd ruin that roof after you got through, but it's still, no, I don't.
Yeah, we had to work on the chimney on the old store. Like, I had to get bucket loads of stuff, because it, it's just the old, it's for wood burning stuff. So it had the flu, it has, I have a pipe plate, or, you know, a flu cover.
Right.
Over it. But, yeah, we had to pull a lot of dirt, because over a hundred years, there's a lot of wind-blown dirt, you know, a lot of, uh, acorns, I think squirrels, you know, put in there and just, yeah, builds up. So I had to get like buckets and buckets and buckets of dirt out of there. And I had a brick fall on my hand while it, while I did it. But, yeah, it's, uh, it, so they, I wouldn't doubt that these are also, probably have a lot of dirt, you know. There, there's a lot of stuff in there, I imagine.
Well, are any of these people, people who might know, I mean, maybe we need to work on them, so I will do the chimneys first, and then.
Well, the, the one that pointed it out, and said, he said it should be removed, he says, it's, it doesn't look very stable to him, he'd be leery about lifting the house, and said, and what it might do, it might not, though. But he, he, he thinks it should be removed. I asked him if he could do that, he could find a way to do that. Any idea how much? No, no. But, we could, we'll find out.
I mean, you know, an old chimney like that, it, I probably wouldn't take much to chink it off, brick by brick, you know, out of there.
Maybe.
Maybe, I, just from our own experience.
Well, my experience, with old, old, a cistern, in-ground cistern, still had the gutter and the pipe off the roof that went into it to feed it, and we decided we were gonna take it down, knock off the, it was about, about two, three feet off the ground, above the ground. Just break it off and then fill it in. That mortar on the inside. That mortar on the inside, extremely, extremely difficult to break.
Wow.
Extremely.
Huh.
Uh, we worked a long time to get it to break down enough where we could. But, maybe we just.
These might be pretty freaking sturdy if they've been up there for a hundred plus years and still, still standing.
Don't know.
What's gone is when someone physically took.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, that might be.
Do any contract based on.
Well, it seems like any way we go.
Yeah.
That the, the chimney is gonna be an extra, just like everything else is, you know, on top, so the leveling only. Um, I guess what we just need to concern with now. Okay, other questions, other? Um, I mean, we can like potentially kind of put our. Maybe one, two, three down here and just make the decision in executive session, or, I mean.
I'd kinda like to get Frank's, you know, private feelings about everybody.
Needs to be private.
I'd, I'd rather go into executive and talk about this.
All right. All right, are we then ready to?
Yeah, he just, it's seven oh four, we're going into executive session.
So, at this point, yes, we'll recess our regular commission meeting at this time. And go into and convene our executive session, which will be off-camera and, and out public.
And then I guess he'll turn on the camera again for.
And then, uh, when we, we adjourn, I mean, re, reconvene our regular or special meeting, then we'll come back.
Okay, with that decision, hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah. See you in a minute.
Yes, it's our needs and our.
Back from executive session.
We have blue light, yes we do, all right, um, at this point, we're going to reconvene our regular special. It says regular, but it's actually a special commission meeting. Uh, so item number five, discuss and consider foundation repair for new city hall. So, what we have done is review the bids from six different contractors. That, uh, were able to provide information to us regarding, uh, the leveling of the structure at seventy-five, seventy-one Kingsbury Road. The companies that we did, uh, uh, contact and get information from was Juan Sandoval. Uh, Permanent Foundation Solutions, Groundworks, Crown Leveling. Uh, Ruela's Construction and House Leveling, and Ramon Property Construction. Um, of course, as we were saying, uh, it, you know, it's not apples to apples in any of this, there's a lot of different pricings. Um, and then a lot of different, uh, other factors, recommendations, uh, additional costs. Um, and, uh, uh, based upon just the, uh. The, I guess, willingness, uh, of some of the contractors to, to take on this particular, uh. Uh, job, so, out of this, we have decided, um, uh, we still have a couple of questions. You know, regarding this, but we have decided to this point, um, to, uh, pursue a contract. With Ruela's Construction and House Leveling, and so at this point, we can, uh, take a motion. To, uh, have the city enter into a contract, Ruela's Construction and House Leveling.
I will make a motion to have the city go into contract with Ruela's Construction and House Leveling.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second on that, any further discussion on this? So, a part of this again is, we wanna make sure that we have a, a contract, um, before we enter into the actual work with this. And we do know that there's some additional things regarding chimneys that we need to get input on, you know, from this person. Um, that will probably be outside the contract, but get their expertise, I guess, on that, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any other discussion on this motion?
Good.
All right. I'm pointing to Sam here, our city attorney.
No further discussion, uh, uh, I think, uh, your, uh, decision is, uh. I think you've, uh, done a complete review of all of the, uh, bases for their different pricing. And, uh, and, uh, so I think it's a good decision to award the contract to, uh, to Gabriel Ruela's.
Okay, all right, all those in favor, so the motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, all right, well, that motion carries, and at this point, we will adjourn our special meeting, yes ma'am?
I want to, I wanted to bring up that, um, it seems like we, so we had talked about in June. Meeting on the twenty-third, which is the, uh.
Third Monday.
Right.
Yes, because of the fire department having their county meeting in here, right?
Yeah, the twenty-third is the fourth Monday, but it appears.
That's the third Monday in June, twenty-third is.
Twenty-third, the third Monday is when we usually meet, and that is the sixteenth, if you look here, are you looking at June? Yes.
Yeah, these two, nine, sixteen, twenty.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I, I think we can't have this room on the twenty-third.
Did we find out if the county meeting is on the fourth Monday or the last Monday?
So, he was saying last night at the party that he would find out at a meeting that he's at right now.
Okay.
So, uh, I guess we could, I can find out from him if, it sounds to me like this room is gonna be busy that night.
Hmm.
Um, but, yeah, um, there are actually five Mondays in June.
But then you're out of town on the sixteenth, right?
Yeah, and I, we had talked about maybe meeting on the ninth, but that's just two weeks from now, and I've got my birthday. And I'm gonna be out of town for four days, other than that, and, uh, it just sounds really soon and like there's a lot to do before that.
Does, does it have to be on a Monday?
No.
No.
I wonder, um, I wonder if we could just do June twenty-fourth, the Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds.
That work?
Yeah, works for me.
We'll have to let the fire department know, but.
Yeah, that's our work around.
I think I did mention to David, I was like, what if we did that Tuesday, last night, so.
That's like a, yes, so my, okay, on the board, it's, oh, the twenty-fourth is open?
Okay.
Yes, good, okay. All right, we'll write it in, just.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah. Okay.
Send a message for it, send me an email.
That will be June.
Text message, several things.
Okay. All right, good, so, we can all be here? Okay, sounds good. At this point, again, we adjourn.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you.